Your office is right through that wall. Six point twenty, we've been on six point two five before.
You're around.
I don't know, I just.
I don't know if anyone would be calling it or not.
My sent a text out this morning, she might be late.
Can I see the sharpness?
I didn't know.
Maybe seat clock.
Morning, who we have?
Morning, it's Monica Fox.
Morning, Monica. Hey, good morning, everyone. We ask you to please rise if you're able for the opening prayer and a pledge of allegiance before we convene our commissioners' public meeting. Heavenly Father, as we move forward into a new month, may we do so with a heartfelt gratitude and reflection for what we have been given over past year. This month brings the year to a close filled with many blessings and challenges. Thank you for your faithfulness through it all. May your hand grant us the wisdom and strength to move into the weeks and year to come. Father, on Saturday, remember a time when evil attacked our world. On that faithful Sunday morning, two thousand four hundred American heroes lost their lives in the attack on Pearl Harbor. Nearly half of them were on USS Arizona. There were four hundred sailors and Marines on USS Oklahoma. And over eleven hundred were wounded on that day. We remember the two young men, Paul Free and Billy Brant, in Lake Hummy County, that die as heroes. Their memories, along with these other Americans, who paid the ultimate sacrifice, will never be forgotten. This attack led to the greatest generation who stood their ground and defended our freedom, and you gave them the courage and bravery to fight evil. Let us honor them by protecting our freedoms for future generations. As President Ronald Reagan once quoted, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction." We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It's to be fought for and protected and handed on for them to do the same. For one day, we'll spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it was once like in the United States where men were free. As we remember those brave souls at Pearl Harbor, witness the evil that is evident today, we pray for the peace during the season of peace. May your love protect our troops worldwide, and we pray for your guidance as we discuss these things in your name. Amen. Morning, at this time we'll convene our commissioners' public meetings. I'll ask for approval in minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion.
A second. All fair side. You have any public comments on agenda items only at this time? Yes. Yes, we have Shannon here today. Shannon? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any online?
Nothing.
Okay, moving on to, in addition to personnel actions on the agenda.
Yep, the first one is addition to personnel actions for domestic relations office, Stephanie Trumbull. And the next one is correction to item five point two, parcel number of twenty six zero one two five two two.
Take that motion for the addition and correction to the agenda.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side. So that's added and corrected on the agenda for further discussion.
All right, moving to reports then. Krista?
Morning, Krista.
Presented for your ratification are invoices due through December fourth, two thousand twenty four, to be paid on November twenty seventh in the amount of one million eight hundred and seventy four thousand seven hundred and ninety one dollars and ninety six cents. The breakdown is as follows: From the general fund, eight hundred and twenty three thousand five hundred and forty six dollars and sixty seven cents, for a percentage of forty three point nine three. From other grants, four hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty cents, for a percentage of twenty four point five five. From the landfill, five hundred and fifty nine thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars and eighty six cents, for a percentage of twenty nine point eight five. And from escrow, thirty one thousand three hundred and two dollars and thirteen cents, for a percentage of one point six seven percent. Want to vote on both at the same time or separately?
Separately, please. I have a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
Is there any questions or comments? Okay, all fair side?
Also presented for your ratification are invoices due through December eleventh to be paid on December fourth in the amount of three million three hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty six dollars and sixty five cents. Breakdown is as follows: From the general fund, five hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and fifty three dollars and eighteen cents, for a percentage of seventeen point two one percent. From other grants, one hundred and twenty six thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and nine cents, for a percentage of three point eight two percent. From the landfill, two million five hundred and seventy two thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty four cents, for a percentage of seventy seven point six one percent. And from escrow, forty five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and four cents, for a percentage of one point three six percent.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I'm just going to make the comment that in the RMS, which is extremely high this week, there is some new equipment purchases that fortunately got delivered and we have.
That was a half million of it, and then I believe a million of it was for closure funds.
And just for the, for the record, for anybody that doesn't understand that closure funds are what we have to do with D E P to shut off portions of the landfill as it's.
And that money has to be set aside for those, for those closures fired by D E P. Okay, motion is second, all fair side? Terry, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's time we recess commissioners' public meeting for salary board, and we'll convene the salary board this time.
First item is to request to approve salary board minutes from the November twenty first, two thousand twenty four meeting.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Next, we have items. Would you like to vote on them separately?
Yes, please.
First item, planning and community development, a request to change the clerk four to an administrative specialist.
That's a name only, correct?
Correct.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
In domestics, there are multiple titles. Can we vote on them together?
Yes.
Okay, the clerk three. Pay grade five. Am I saying this right, Mike?
Yes, they'll be customer service specialists.
Oh, also, all the clerk threes changing to customer service specialists.
Okay, again, this has to do with name only.
Correct. Yeah, so those numbers are not pay grade.
Just title change.
The last, isn't the last clerk three?
I was going to read that if you'd let me.
Oh, well, you said all the clerk three.
Well, I didn't get to that next line, sir.
Well, then it wouldn't be all the clerk threes. If one of the clerk threes is going to be a locate specialist.
Correct. I was going to correct myself. So the first line is the clerk threes that are changing to customer service specialists with one of them changing to a locate specialist.
I will make a motion.
And then in the, why I, there's another line with some clerk threes changing to intake specialists.
The nine, ten, five isn't pay grade.
Correct.
Yeah, the position on the T P A, so clerk three zero five is a person.
Yeah, not pay grade.
Understand that.
Oh, I got it. Yeah, I got it better than you do.
I don't like it.
Sorry, Mike. As soon as I was reading that, I'm like, those are not pay grades.
I thought that was confusing.
Okay.
So there are, just to clarify, before we vote on this, in domestics, there are multiple clerk threes. Some of them are getting different title changes, just to clarify what they are doing. That better?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyway, from the generic term, should clarify.
To clarify.
To clarify what they do.
Correct. Apologies.
It's title only. Can I have a motion?
I will make the motion.
All fair side? Okay. Same old journey salary word. Need commissioners' public meetings. Thank you, Krista.
All right, women personnel actions. Mike?
All right, good morning.
Morning.
Approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. In domestic relations, Allison Allen, clerk three, pay grade four, fifteen dollars point four five zero eight cents per hour, not to exceed a thousand hours annually. Anticipated transfer date, December eighth, two thousand twenty four. In the prison, Crystal Stever, licensed practical nurse, pay grade ten, thirty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period. Anticipated start date, December ninth, two thousand twenty four. In resource management, Chris Marshall, recycling laborer, pay grade four, fourteen fifty per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, December ninth, two thousand twenty four. Also in resource management, Justin Poust, equipment operator, pay grade five, twenty dollars and thirty four cents per hour, eighty hours per pay period. Anticipated start date, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty four. Soil conservation, Benjamin Peterson, erosion and sediment control technician, pay grade nine, forty seven thousand one hundred and fifty three dollars and thirty four cents per year.
Okay, Mike, we stop you there?
Yes.
And just address those. These are all replacement positions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so kind of motion to accept these personal actions.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side? Okay, and then move on to the last one.
Uh, let's see. Soil conservation, Benjamin Peterson, erosion sediment control technician, pay grade nine, forty seven thousand one hundred and fifty three thirty four cents per year.
That's a replacement position.
Yes, this is seventy five hours per pay period, anticipated start date, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty four. And then that final one, uh, this is a compensation adjustment per policy. Domestic relations office, Stephanie Trible, director, pay grade twelve, ninety two thousand four hundred and fifty four dollars point zero six six nine cents per year. Seventy five hours per pay period effective date, December eighth, two thousand twenty four.
Motion to accept those two.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Is there any comments or questions? All fair side? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, it's a time we recess commissioners' public meeting for the Board of Assessments Reviews. We'll convene the Board's Assessments Reviews at this time. Go ahead, Brooke.
Morning, commissioners. I'm seeking your approval for Marlin newcomer. His house was destroyed by a tree crashing down. Bring storm on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, so the house was totally destroyed. The refund amount is one hundred and thirty one dollars and eleven cents, and it's for five months only.
Brooke, is that, is that the Lincoln Drive?
Yes.
So I'm just curious, what, so as he's rebuilding, will he end up being re-assessed and paying this back? So at this point, we'll give him the refund, but in all reality, we get.
This refund is for this year. If he builds, he starts building next year, it doesn't go back onto this year.
It's already.
It's what?
It's already up.
Yes.
The new, no, the new house is already up.
His house is done?
It's not done.
But he did, well, and he waited a while to come in for the refund and everything. He didn't contact.
But in reality, I mean, we're not losing, we're losing this particular small amount.
Or the house that was.
Or the house that was there and gone, but we'll regain it as the new house gets.
It'll be because of the construction of the reassessed.
Yes, it will.
Potentially higher.
Yes, it could be.
Motion to accept the request.
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve it. I'll second.
All fair side? This time we'll adjourn the Board of Assessments Reviews.
Thank you.
Convene the commissioners' public meeting this time. Monica? Hey, Monica, you on the line? Loser? Who's the officer? Big header.
Yeah, must have dropped.
Yeah.
Hi there, I'm back.
Okay, glad to have you back. Thank you. You're up.
So six point one is a vote to approve the C B G for fiscal year twenty twenty one, subversive agreement with Albright Life, like homing in the amount of fifty thousand hundred and fifty three dollars and thirty nine cents for a previously approved project to repair their exterior walls of the building.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Now, fair side? Okay, thank you.
And then six point two is we vote to approve the C B G for fiscal year twenty twenty three, subversive agreement with Albright Life, like homing in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty five dollars for the same project.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any questions or comments? And all fair side? Okay, thank you, Monica.
Great, thank you.
All right, six point three through six point seven, that's Michael net.
Morning, Michael.
Morning, commissioners. Six point three, we're asking for your approval for an existing agreement with L N L Boiler Maintenance. In the past, they come in each year and tune the boilers and maximize the efficiency by this documentation for air quality permit. And we're also additionally, they're going to come in when we convert those boilers over to natural gas. We're going to use the landfill gas instead of the boilers. We're going to generate more power, so we'll actually make more money that way.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Okay, six point four is, uh, we're asking for your approval to amend the agreement with Highway Equipment Supply Company. And basically, they've increased their prices for twenty twenty five. That's a net five percent increase over last for service for all the equipment you have over the way, those women as needed basis.
A motion accept.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. A second.
Any questions or comments? All fair side?
So six point five is we're asking for your approval for amendment to our agreement with March Technology. March Technology is the company that we use to service our SCADA system, which is basically all the data acquisition system for all the control systems we have there. So they asked for a seven point four percent increase over last year. It's also is on an add as needed basis.
Said the increase was seven point four?
Yes.
Was that, did we get that at all, or did we try to get it down lower? What's that, that's, did we try to get that?
We can just mess off record because I have been addressing some of the contracts. I would say, you know, some of my concern with some of these contracts is that they're ten year contracts, and then they have renewals that they can do for ten years. I personally had said to Tina, looking at these, that moving forward, what we need to be doing is putting them back out to bid for competitive pricing.
Would it be one that we could table this time for discussion?
Uh, we certainly can. I think it's, um, it's totally up to you, but you know, at this point, they're going to have to need an extension just to allow and for any kind of negotiation and or bidding process anyway. So I would say a minimum of three months to allow for that process to happen. Um, it's my understanding, I believe Jason's out on vacation, so some of those discussions were happened with Tina without Jason being at the office.
Well, we put the extension off for next week.
Certainly can.
I would, I would ask for a motion to.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to table this for at least a week.
All fair for table one for a week?
Six point six is we're asking for approval for the agreement for forestment septic system. Uh, this is a six year contract I have referred to. It's a per monthly basis, three hundred and twenty five dollars. I'm going to pump out the septic tanks at the landfill, and that also includes disposal that bring to a wastewater treatment plant.
Is there an increase in that amount?
I believe there is. I believe all of them are. There's some form of increase in some of them. Which is, that's my, you know, something I wanted to look at.
Does that hold for the six years, or is there a, I didn't see anything in here where it says about escalation.
Well, in the original, in the original document, it does. So basically, they have a period of time for which they have to come back to us and let us know of any price increases. I would say historically, most of these extensions and these vendors do come back with a pricing.
And also, you know, being new, I don't know, why do we give a six year rather than like a two year?
Exactly. Well, that was my, that's my thing. So that's what we should be doing. That's what I recommended, that we should have a shorter term and then be putting these out to bid to get, you know, more competitive pricing on a regular basis.
I'll make a motion. I'll ask for a motion to table this one also.
Yeah, and, or, I mean, three hundred and twenty five dollars a month is not extraordinary, but it is the principle.
And I think six years. My concerns is six years.
Right, yeah.
So yeah, I will again make a motion to table this.
I'll second. All fair side?
Last one is six point seven. Actually, this is the approval of a contract. Actually, this is so they can actually pay for the trash that they send to the land.
Motion to accept.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All fair side? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Then you can have Jason get ahold of Maya about those two that were tabled.
I think while you're, you're, you're almost off into the sunset, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you've done.
How many years have you been with us?
Just thirty one.
Just thirty one? That's thirty one years of your life.
You don't want to go for like thirty five? Thirty one's not a good round number.
Mike's been our engineer at landfill. We appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, six point eight through six point ten is me. The first item I have is a vote to approve the agreement with cyber genetics. This is for expert consultation and forensic laboratory services on an as needed basis for the district attorney's office. And they anticipate not exceeding a hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to accept. All fair side?
Okay, the next item, six point nine, vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with Brandon Les, extending the date of the agreement to December thirty first, two thousand twenty five. This is simply just a term extension, and this is for pre release center for G E D testing. No increase in price.
Motion accept.
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
And the last, oh, sorry.
All fair side? Okay, go ahead.
Yep, and the last item I have for you, six point ten, a vote to approve the subrecipient monitoring agreement with Lake Hummy County Children and Youth Services. This is just a formality that's needed as we pass through funds to the jointer board for the services that they provide.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
All right, six point eleven through six point fourteen is Salvico.
Morning, Sal. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, so bit of background, as you may remember, this is the county's allotment of the liquid fuels funding. Previously, with the commissioners, boards of commissioners, would just disperse based on a road mileage and population calculation to all the municipalities throughout the county. Last year, that changed. There were some changes down at Penn Dot and guidance and how we were allowed to do things with this money. Uh, and we decided to revive the liquid fuels grant program that Mark Marask had run for a number of years, like twelve or fifteen years. So we worked with municipal services at Penn Dot. Obviously, commissioners were involved in these conversations. We sent out the information last, or back in October, to the municipalities. We had six municipalities apply for grants. Um, one project was actually able to be moved over to public assistance through FEMA because it was directly related to tropical storm Debbie damage. Um, so these are the three that, um, you know, the Lake Hummy County Planning Commission helped the M P O select to bring before the commissioners to recommend. And then these are the three that, um, we're going to ask for your recommendation to fund today. The fourth one, six fourteen, is to encumber, uh, county liquid fuels funds to actually repair a county bridge up in, um, the new tribes bridge. Uh, there was scour damage from tropical storm Debbie as well. Did you want me to go down through individually, or did you want to group them? I can do either whatever's.
Let's do them individually.
Okay, so the first one, six, um, point eleven is to award, uh, seventy five thousand dollars of county liquid fuels funding to Clinton Township for a Pinch Town Road project. Um, Clinton Township's worked with us for a, about a year now, trying to scope a project out there. They actually went and see. It was D C funding, multimodal funding to help do road improvements out, that there's going to be safety improvements to guide rail and also some major infrastructure improvements that they need on, on Pinch Town Road. I did invite the municipalities here today. I'm not sure with the weather, if they're willing to make it or not. Um, I know Representative from Muncie Burrow is here in the room with us. Happy to answer any other questions about that project.
Well, we are at six point eleven, that township. Is there anybody from that township here? Okay, a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side? Okay, move on to six point twelve, which would be the Muncie Carpenter Street.
Carpenter Street Bridge, yes. Um, so Muncie Boroughs worked with us now for about two years, um, for their Carpenter Street Bridge. Uh, it's not a whole bridge replacement. It's a bridge repair project. There are some wing walls that are, are going to fail at some point here. Uh, they're going to be working to repair that. They've actually reached out to us. We did an L T A P technical assistance visit, helped get them some information um, to help put together a package. And, um, Charlie, you're in the room, you're actually, there's other funding that's already been allotted to this as well. So all of these are the county assisting municipalities in getting these projects over the line. It's not just a handout, if you will.
Charlie, like to say any words?
Yeah, I'd just like to say some real quick words.
Please just identify yourself.
Charlie C K R L E Y, Hall, and A L L. I would just like to thank commissioners for consideration of this. Uh, we in Muncie, we have a couple of different projects going on. If we have matches, we have eight. Those of you that know match projects, they are bid at a certain number, and we're often not that matched. Slowly escalating upwards. Uh, Muncie Boroughs looking about currently a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars worth of match. Not counting any escalation. So this, uh, this grant would actually help Borough very much, uh, help cover some of those costs. Because Borough has a long term replacement of their current Borough building, which is a blood zone. Any little bit we can help to have all set in future. Any little bit we can help to have all set in future. We have Muncie Burrow Council, I think.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for being here.
And as Sal said and as you just alluded to, the purpose of this is to, you know, help those municipalities that are helping themselves. And it's not just, here's the money you take. It's, it's to get projects over the finish line or to give the assistance. Because it takes all of us working together. And, you know, we appreciate not only Muncie Borough, but all the other municipalities who stay up to date on their things and try to keep things in order and just come to us when they need that, that little push to get over the finish line.
Yeah, they have skin in the game.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I mentioned, he had breakfasted another, and not grant that we have, that we have a matching part.
Thank you. And motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Aight.
Okay, six point one three.
So this is the final county liquid fuels grant award for this year. It's a Picture Rocks Borough. Their, their Main Street Bridge. It's a PennDOT Bridge. PennDOT's doing some work on the bridge. Picture Rocks Borough's been pretty proactive here. They are going to need to do some safety and ADA upgrades during that work that PennDOT's doing. If they go out on their own and do it, it would cost a lot more than thirty-one thousand dollars. They're actually rolling this into the PennDOT project. But again, it's a situation where they need that match. So they've actually, we've actually met with Picture Rocks and PennDOT District Three way prior to grant submission. And they've kind of been teeing this up. So they're, they're very appreciative of this. I know Bill Dormin and Linda were going to attempt to get here today, but I think with the weather, they chose to stay safe.
Thank you. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aight.
Sal, it's important to tell you how the planning commission is the one that you Yes. applications and made the recommendation.
So part of, yeah, sorry. So part of the new grant process was the MPO and planning department didn't feel it was appropriate for just us to pick winners, right? So we reached out to the planning commission and they are actually, there's a subcommittee on the planning commission that reviews these applications with us and they are the ones that make the recommendation to the commissioners. I mean, we give background information or if there's questions on timeline or scope or something like that, you know, Scott Austin and myself, the MPO buy that information. But the planning commission itself are the ones that, that make the final recommendations to the commissioners.
And Mr. Schreumann's here today. He's a member of the planning commission.
He's actually, he's a member of the subcommittee.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, thank you for service and also please pass that on to the others.
I know from, from our end, it's helpful because obviously while we're county employees, we're not municipal supervisors or borough presidents or anything. We're also not experts in all aspects of construction. So having a resource like that is very helpful.
Okay, six point one four.
Again, this is the, the county bridge up in New Tribes. It's County Bridge one fourteen. During Tropical Storm Debbie, there were a couple of things that happened to the bridge. There were some debris that previously actually worked with us on to remove. One of the other issues though is a scour underneath the one section of the bridge. Larson Design Group is the county engineer that does our emergency bridge inspections. They recommend that we fill that scour hole, obviously. So that's what this is, encumbering the sixty thousand dollars to be able to offset the cost of that project. And that'll probably happen sometime here, spring twenty twenty-five, when the weather breaks.
Hey, great. Thank you. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aight.
Aight.
I do have a question about that. Are we not putting that in for public assistance with, it's due Saturday with the?
We should be.
Yeah.
We can do that, okay.
Okay, that's something because I'm, the next one's.
You're right, the designation.
Yeah, so you should look at that to see if you can get it through to the public assistance for this.
Well, I did, I did, that is, it's in the designation for the.
Yeah, it is.
You have next week, on for next week, you have.
I have an emergency declaration, but she's talking about the actual application.
Yeah, the decisions are decided.
Yeah.
Okay. This is that, right? That's why I'm asking.
I'll go back and get all that. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Okay, six point one five.
Yeah, the next item actually I'll be presenting on behalf of John Lovell since he's out. Vote to approve the designation of agent, which would appoint myself, Maya Toon, as the county agent to apply for FEMA public assistance reimbursement as it's related to Tropical Storm Debbie.
So she just designated herself? Pretty clever.
I can certainly designate someone else.
She loves more work.
Yeah.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aight.
Aight.
And then the next items, six point sixteen through six point nineteen is Leslie Kilpatrick.
You're going to designate yourself or anything?
No, no, no. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Maya. Okay, six point sixteen, seeking your approval to renew the coroner's law enforcement investigator software. It's actually clear and the amount of, and it changes per year. So we're doing a three-year contract. The first year is going to be a hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-seven cents per month. And then it goes up five percent every month or every year after that for three years.
Five percent every year?
Yeah.
Okay, not every month?
No, every year. I'm sorry, every year.
Okay.
Uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aight.
Just to clarify, it's thirty-six months.
Yep.
Um, six point one seven. This is seeking your approval to switch gears with our records retention software. We've been with our records retention software for as long as I can remember. And their new contract wants to be a charge of like fifteen thousand dollars a year. And, and for what we use at Records Retention, it's just a little excessive for us. So we did reach out to actually the prior commissioner, Jack McHernan, and we were able to visit his facility and take a peek at his software. And it's definitely more in line of what we need at a much lower cost. So just to get into the software is going to be forty-four thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. And then yearly, it's going to be a hundred and ninety-five dollars a month. So it definitely saves us a lot more money than the fifteen thousand that the new, the current company wanted.
Very good. Thank you. And just to be clear, I think you said forty-four thousand? Forty-five hundred?
Forty-five, forty-five ninety, yeah.
That's forty-five hundred, okay.
Four thousand five hundred and ninety.
A motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. What's the additional?
Thousand. Um, that's install. Yeah, that's the install price one time.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aight.
Aight.
All right, commissioners, seeking your approval just to renew our lease for our Dell services or rental lease in the amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and five and forty-seven cents. And, and I'm sorry, but all of these are, are in our budget. I did forget to mention that.
And, and these leases, Leslie, this is equipment like outlets, desktops, or my?
It's servers and, yeah, and the, and the, on our network equipment.
So not?
Not computers. I'm sorry, yeah, no computers. Yeah, we buy them outright.
Okay.
And I believe, and this is a new contract for me, but I believe that the contract is going to be up in twenty twenty-six. And at that point, we should revisit this.
Have we ever evaluated owning this stuff as opposed to leasing this stuff?
Um, there again, I'm just now getting into this, but they're definitely good questions.
I think you'll be exploring.
Yeah.
Next year.
Yep.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, thank you. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aight.
All right, six point nineteen, I'm seeking your approval to pay the invoice for sixty-five hundred mail-in ballots that were processed in September. This is just the invoice to get that amount paid. And then there will be another invoice for the rest of the mail-in ballot that were mailed out later.
Just going to add a back eighty-eight.
Um, so that's a reimbursement grant. So, or sets that money aside to pay my, like three hundred thousand of his bills, if you will, so.
So this is cost of mail-in ballots?
Correct. Yep, that we, we hire a company to mail them out for us.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aight. Thank you, Leslie.
Yep, thank you.
Six point two O, Shannon Roswell.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Okay, we finally received approval from EDA to move forward on the award for the phase one Blue Storm Crosspipes project. We will be working with Capola Services. Their bid was one million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Which was a very, a very competitive bid. The problem was is that we had only received one bid, which was why EDA was concerned. We explained to them our bid process, which was a competitive bid process. We did have multiple companies attend the pre-bid meeting. Unfortunately, because of the, you know, our previous project was too big and it cost too much with this type of rehabilitation method. But this project was much smaller, so some companies didn't feel it was cost effective to bid on it because they would have to become certified to do the installation and they would also have to have special equipment. So there was no happy medium. We, we were able to convince EDA that we did do competitive bid and that because of the type of rehabilitation method, that giving the bid out to the sole company, the bid was okay. They sent us that approval letter late last week. And so now we're in the process. We'd like to award the bid to Capola Services pending the contract, which we have to get moving forward. We need to have this approval to move forward and everything before after the contract's signed and approval moves forward with construction by December twenty-sixth for this part of the project.
Okay. Oh, motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I'll, I'll make the comment. So we're, we're looking at a January shovel in the ground.
Well, there's no shovels in the ground. This is actually, we're looking at, technically, we would give a notice to proceed and they would have to start, start construction by December twenty-sixth. Because this is all, they're not moving any dirt with these projects. This is all underground pipe rehabilitation. So they'll be out there doing surveys. They'll be out there doing making sure that they have, they have to order the materials. So there is a lag time for ordering materials, but they'll be out there onsite doing all of their inspection work. And you'll see, there's four pipes with this bid. So you'll see in a couple of different sections. One is near the Hepburn Pump Station. There's one up near Memorial Avenue. There's one near the Maynard Street Riverwalk. I can't remember. Oh, and the other one is under kind of underneath where two twenty crosses the Lycoming Creek. So in those places, you're, you're going to see trucks and equipment out there mobilizing, but you won't see any backcoats. Don't want them to dig up the lead. So that's kind of what you'll see as we move forward. And once they, once they actually are out there doing the installation of the, the SPR, I'd like to get the commissioners out there so we can kind of do a, show how it's being done and show people that work is being done, even though they don't see backpedals out there.
Well, I guess that, that's my point of the shovel, shovel in the ground, not necessarily digging dirt, but work being done.
Yes, yes. They'll start work. We need them to start work by December twenty-sixth in order to make sure the grant stays active. The second phase bid is due December sixteenth. We'll be opening that December nineteenth. And they need to, well, kind of shovels in the ground. I believe it's January twenty-third. So same situation. This one is a little unique because we have to meet EDA requirements for the contract and Maya and I and the consultants and Tita Cog are now trying to figure out, yeah, what do we have to have in that contract?
So the one that needs shovels in the ground by January twenty-third?
Yes.
That hasn't gone out for bid yet?
No, the bids are due December sixteenth. We're going to open them on the nineteenth and we have, we'll have a very short timeframe to award that.
That's our last meeting of the year, like.
Yes, yes. That's what, we wanted to make sure, we did extend it two weeks because we wanted to make sure we got at least two competitive bids. Um.
Have one?
Because it, well, they're not doing till.
Well, I mean, if we already did, could we say that or can we not say that?
What?
We, yeah, we can say.
There are no bids received yet.
Okay.
Okay, because they're still, they still have until the sixteenth at five o'clock to submit those bids. And then that's twenty-four pipes. This is, no, that's twenty-five pipes. This is four pipes for this one.
Are we concerned that we get no bids?
No, I, I'm not concerned that we're not going to get a bid. My only concern is that we get two bids. Each different federal agency has different bid requirements. I'd only, because we have a competitive bid process. It only requires, yeah, you receive one bid. EDA requires you receive two bids. So that's why we extended it and had a second pre-bid meeting. So we have, I believe, five to seven firms that have attended the pre-bid meetings. I'm not sure if they're full firms or subcontractors, but we've had five to seven firms attend the meeting, so. We're hopeful.
Uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side?
Aight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to general public comment. I'll commit this comment, sorry. And then we can go to general public.
What's that? Any commissioner comments?
Um. No, I think the, the only thing is, obviously, we had a little snow today. I think our, our county staff did a great job getting our county properties cleaned up. Did that this year without outside contractors, which was going to save us thousands of dollars. So I appreciate what our staff did. She, the help that everybody did with buying some plows and things like that that cost us some money, but not even close to what we paid for one facility last year for an outside contractor.
Absolutely. I agree, Joe.
And just to piggyback off that, winter's obviously here. And I, well, I guess depending on where you're at, the snow was worse than it was. But if we get snow this winter, I'd encourage you, whether, whether we get snow or not, to look out for your neighbors, especially some of the older ones. But we do in snow removal, especially if you live in town and you have neighbors all over. I've never understood, I, we have a snow blower. If you're fortunate enough to have a snow blower, I've never understood why people just did their sidewalk and stopped. I always thought the hassle was getting yourself bundled up, getting the snow blower fueled up and all that. Once you get out there and you get rolling, it's kind of easy to just go up and down the street. So just help out those people that, I mean, you know your neighbors, you know, the ones that are older that could use the help. You know, I used to have a neighbor kid and he was just, he'd always say, if you do the driveway with the snow blower, I'll take care of everything else. So just, you know, be, be courteous, be neighborly. Because again, I always thought, once you're outside, once you're bundled up and you're going, it's a lot easier than it is, it is for you, for some of us, than it is for other people. So look out for, for your neighbors and, and, you know, help out when you can.
Okay, thank you. Public comment? Roger? Morning, guests, please.
Commissioner.
Morning.
My name is Roger McRae. Live at forty-six Kinsey Street, Montgomery, Pennsylvania. I've been a resident of the county since coming to be employed back in September nineteen seventy-three. A little background, I was a probation officer, like coming kind of probation officer, first in juvenile probation, then adult probation for eight and a half years and then I was elected as district judge and served for thirty years, finished that thirty-year term of five terms of office in January of twenty twelve. I served another seven years as a senior district judge, been on Montgomery Borough Council for two and a half years and presently have almost a year in on the Montgomery area school board. When I came about here today, I was starting to follow it. It was in August, August ninth, it's the first articles. And I passed out here about, I guess, the reshuffling of offices. I'm not quite sure why, but one that article that really hit home to me, this has to do with the like coming county registering quarters office, it was written by Jenny Johnson. And I believe you should have a copy of that and I'd just like to highlight that, you know, she, in her article, August twentieth, twenty four, was published in the Sun Gazette. And let's read through it. Now, I think of all the articles I've seen, this is, it's true the most. Now, I've, over the years, you know, I've used the service as a registry recorder in the forensics office. It's a probation officer, you know, you go and check the criminal records. Forensics office, something doesn't look right, you go over to the registry reporters office. A commissioner Metzger might relate to this. One time, I was doing a pre-sentence on a guy that had rolled back on offense. It's possible to do that now. This guy had posted his house up on Walnut Street. They, I was assigned to do the pre-sentence investigation on him. And I go down and I'm checking the records and something just didn't seem right. I go back and forth. Not only is this guy not at home when I went to see him, his house, he had put up his real estate bail for fifty thousand dollars. It was gone. This guy was in Florida. When I went back and told the chief, I mean, how, how did that happen? But again, I was just able to go across the hall back and forth, the registering quarters office, the forensics office, face this down. You know, we talked about the weather today, Commissioner. We've seen a point now, you know, in the summer, we've got, you know, the summer heat and rain. If you've got people coming back and forth across the street with, with records, not a good situation today. It's, it's terrible, even some people might be able to hear today. But again, this article from, from Jenny Johnson, I do not know this lady, but I think she very clearly explains it. I think there, there's a need to talk, you know, I was a district judge, I would not want a probation office right next door to my, to my courtroom. Go out by there now and there's like a window, you can look in as I would different times with those, one of the registry reporters office, see if Alan Page was in session or now Aaron Beakley. I think there's a security kind of thing. Plus the other thing, you got the public coming through there and you've got these people, you know, probation people filling around there waiting to get into that office. That's not a good situation. I would, you know, like commissioners to, you know, reach out, get opinion on this as far as a move. I would definitely like to see the registry quarters office remain where it is. I would think that the current district judge, Aaron Beakley, who's right there, would have an opinion on it. I think the like coming law association would have an opinion on it and the real, I don't know why I haven't seen anything from them, but I think they all have an opinion and I'd be glad to speak for them. And I'm not sure, the other thing is, looking for extra cell space and stuff. And I know there's different costs. When the county building was built, the courthouse, I was first taken around and shown it, it was explained to me that that building could be added on to the top. And it could add what you need up there if you're looking for more cell space. Wouldn't need a fence around it, anybody wants to check out from the fifth floor, they're welcome. But the elevators are there, wouldn't change the parking situation. You know, it wouldn't, security and things, it'd be, you know, easily accessible to the courts. But I think, either leave of the records, it's called a courthouse and there's court records. I'd please ask you to, you know, consider keeping that office where it is. And sheriff needs extra space, you know, they could go up or they could come across the street here. Any questions you have for me, I plan on coming to some other meetings in the future to see if they comment from.
Sure, just to explain a little bit of the history behind it is services have basically outgrown a courthouse. Fortunately, when the courthouse was built, there's two courtrooms. Now we have seven. We have five judges and we have two family court offices. So we have actually seven different types of judges in the courthouse. The county prison at one time, when I started with probation back in eighty six, there were six females in our county prison. Okay, we actually were outgrowing the county prison at one point. But due to COVID, it's, it's kind of kind of in the other direction now. And there's other different ways of sentencing people, monitors and things like that. We're trying to figure out how we can put holding cells all on one floor. Okay? Right now, the sheriff's faced with situations where he has two, two holding cells. If you have a female, she has to go and sell by herself. So due to court hearings, you may have as many as a dozen male inmates in one holding cell, security risk, and you have one female next door. So there's a necessity since the increased court services, we now have to have more holding cells. Logistically wise, it makes sense for all to be on one floor. Because security reasons, there was discussion about putting them in a basement. We've had issues with water and sewage over the years in the basement, that's been corrected. We don't know if it ever will come back. If that, God forbid, that ever happened with holding cells in the basement, get a mess. So we don't want anybody in the basement. We don't want any workers in the basement for any reasons. That's happened over the past, nine one one used to be in the basement back in the day. And so we've got everybody out of the basement regarding offices. So we're trying to figure out what the best solution was moving forward. We have heard in other counties, the registry quarters office is in other buildings. Lake County has one, I just had a conversation with, with Chairman Snyder yesterday about his registry recorder. And they're in a separate building. This would be across the street. It's not like they have to go to a mile or two away, walking across the street to get the records. They won't have to go through the metal detector, which is sometimes people want to take their cell phones, can't take it into the courthouse. This way, they could come into a building where the security is much lenient, much more lenient. So that helps the general public that wants to go into registered quarter. But we discussed this, it was actually Commissioner Sorman's idea, which would be maybe the best option of making a move due to the, all, all the assesses these days. We went and spoke to the president judge, would it be, makes more sense for the, the forensics or the registered quarter moving across the street? Now, the president judge said it'd make more sense out of the two, the registry quarter moving across the street. We have storage needs. Forensics office cannot store files now offsite. They have to be on site. He has a need right now, he has to have his files in that basement. By moving the registered quarter across the street, that frees up that space also for the, for the next twenty years for the forensics office, for the DA's office records and for domestic records. The record should be stored down there. So we don't want to jam anything down anybody's throat. All we want is people to work together to try to come up with the best possible solution. By moving probation down to the first floor, they go right through the metal detector, they go into that corner, see their agent and then they would leave. Right now, they're floating throughout the building on different floors. And, you know, sheriff sees them all throughout the building when they come in. A lot of them see their agents, they don't leave, they go through, they go in bathrooms, they go in different, and, and hang out in the courthouse. And they're trying to limit the activity and movement of people throughout the building. You have thousands of people coming through that building on a regular basis. And so that's why we have the security there. No one goes into courthouse usually when they're happy. Unless they're there for adoption or for a marriage license. Most of the time, people are upset that they have to go into that building. And so we have some major security concerns there and sheriff is very busy. So we want to try to get probation where it's located, where it's more logistic, where a client has to come in and do their activities and business. They don't want to be there so they can get out of the courthouse as soon as possible. And after they see their agent, take care of their needs. And at the same time, we have everything on one floor for the sheriff, especially with those holding cells. So that was the thinking behind it. And so we, we, you know, we would love to work with the registry recorder. We have a blueprint downstairs that we want him to be involved in. We want him to, you know, everyone, everywhere we've moved offices, everybody's been involved with moving in those offices, they've had input in that. And that's what we want, we want to take care of those needs long after we're gone. We want to make sure those needs are met by the public. And we've talked to abstractors, we've talked to people who have come into the registry quarters office. You know, what are your needs? You're the, you're the customers. You know, what are yours, and here's one, here's one, right? But for this one who says she's not for it, we have a dozen that who have said they are for it. They came to the meeting and said, we would love to have this works out now. You know, that office was put there in nineteen seventy. It's out of space. Even before we discussed the move, Mr. Huffman says, I need more space. I need a place where I can function. If you walk in that office now, everything's crammed together. We don't want that for him. We want him to have something that's more efficient, much better for the public and for him for years to come. But we just want to sit down at a table and try to work this out together. That's all we're asking. Because we don't have all the answers. That's why we're trying to come up with the best possible solution.
Probation were moved across the street here. State parole, they're up there on Little League.
We'd have to bring security over here. We'd have to hire more sheriffs, we had to bring more security over here, we had to bring cameras over here.
That would be good for this building because you have, you don't always have happy campers going to see their children, maybe for supervised visit with children and youth. So where in the last election, a little tense downstairs for voter services, people waiting and, but waiting longer.
Let me, let me, let me add one more thing. We want to run out to sixth floor, we have a sixth floor open now. So we want to open up to the public. And I don't think they're going to want probation downstairs on the first floor of this office or this building. They want it in the courthouse where it belongs.
We, we realize that with changes, you know, changes, it, it takes time and nobody wants to move. We get that, somebody has to. Because as he said, we're out of space. So you said, well, just move the sheriff. Well, the sheriffs are in the courtrooms all day.
Go up and put everything up.
How much it would cost to add another floor?
I don't know, but you wouldn't have to add, you just only have to add what you thought you would need.
Well, I get it, but like in our, in our aspect, the, the courtrooms, we're responsible for the courtrooms in their state. And the sheriffs are county employees. I get, I was a title searcher, I've searched titles, I get it. And we're trying to be as cooperative to the public as we can be. But the, the only, this wasn't, this was written by a title searcher.
Right.
Because her job, now she has to walk across the street. I don't want to say I'm sorry, but for the attorneys and the title searchers, I get it. We're not making our courthouses, we're, we're worried about the safety of the courthouse and our sheriff's department. And we're not going to put our sheriff's department out and make their job harder to make the title searcher's job easier. And we're not building on to the courthouse and it is orbiting cost because a couple of title searchers are going to have to walk across the street. I was a title searcher, I get it. Like they got to park somewhere anyway and they got to walk and they can't take their cell phone in. I think when you get through this, lots of the attorneys and the title searchers are going to be happy that they can take their cell phone in. Because how many people walk up to that building and they're like, I can't take my cell phone? So I get it, somebody's going to be put out. You say put out the sheriff's department. We looked at all the options and we talked to people, when you said get opinions, we got opinions, we got a million opinions. And they said that the easiest one to move was the register and recorder. Is it going to be inconvenient for some people? Sure, but as we talked about Clinton County, they're not the same building. And when you look at some of the lists that she had, or if you need to apply for a marriage license, how often does that happen? So like, if you're going to apply for a marriage license and you have a divorce and you have to walk across the street to two different buildings one time? Okay, adoptions, again, these are not daily activities. How many adoptions do we have? Do you need to walk across the street? And we're not sending them across town, we're not sending them out to Lysoc View. We're walking across the street, which people here do it all the time, she did it today. So it's, they're put out this much. I, I really, and we're not taking on millions of dollars in, in construction costs to additions. And we're not moving our sheriff's department, we went through all this. We were going to move sheriffs, we were going to move probation. I mean, you mentioned probation being not in the building, probation's already in the building. They're just on a different floor. So we, we had all kinds of people that were willing to move or willing, we had a, a department, the probation office was going to divide their department across the street, have half their operations there and have half their operations here. And we discussed that, we're like, that can't be the most efficient way to do it. So yes, we understand that somebody's going to be put out, it's going to be different for some people. But we're just out of space and we had to move somebody. And we took all the, all the opinions and the consensus was, it's not, it's not unanimous. But overall, it was the best one to move is the register and recorder. So that's how we got to it. It was not a quick decision and it was not, it came after discussion, after discussion, after discussion.
And we have, we have a situation where we used to have two judges, now we have, we used to have two judges. Now we have seven. And we have to have those holding cells all on floor.
Yeah, what, five commonplace judges?
Yeah, and then two, two family court. Right, so we have dozens of hearings a day, we have inmates being brought over. And, and, and for the sheriffs, you know, we just remodeled the third floor for the sheriffs. So it makes sense for everything to be with the sheriffs on one floor, especially all on one floor. And so probation had to be moved and probation should be in the courthouse. And so where do we move them? Will we move them on the first floor where it makes sense? That they go through the metal detector and they, they do their business and then they leave when they're done. So this was the best option and, and it was the most cost effective option we looked at to, 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 to do a build out in, in the existing building downstairs is the most cost effective, whatever office goes down there, it's the most cost effective way to do a build out inside of a building that doesn't need to have security than to put new construction somewhere, which is millions of dollars, new construction.
My takeaway from discussion, we have gentlemen, seeing that the logical thing would be adult probation.
Well, then we bring.
Because you don't have, you don't have a security issue running them all through, through the in and out there. State parole office, they, they have a, their, their district office on Little League.
But then we have to pay for security in this building.
But you would also be giving security to the rest of this building to a certain degree. It's sort of like loyal sock township, you don't really have a police department, but state police are driving through there all the time and it gives more of a feeling to the public that, you know, there'd be, you know, if there's security, there's law enforcement.
Well, you could add, you could add security to everywhere. You could add security to McDonald's and you could have an armed officer and it would give the public more of a safe, but is it needed? And that's the question, like what, what is the cost to the benefit? Can we find, can we find sheriff's deputies? You know, hiring is still a process, you know, metal detectors, so just say, well, we'll pay for it. And again, we're paying for security here, we're hiring more people, we're taking on all these costs. Why? Because the title searchers and the attorneys don't want to walk across the street.
Well, you have other people work for the courts, have to take records and may get called moments noticed. They needed such and such record in courtroom number one. Elderly tip staff.
It's a situation where we're not going to be able to please everyone.
Right.
And, and so we have to think of what's the best option, which is the least, it, it, it's the least cost. For instance, when we designed this building, we had no security over at Zegna Plaza. On those floors, we had nothing.
Right.
Okay, instead of putting sheriffs downstairs lobby, we used our keypads, we have a card, right there's the keypad. If you go through that door, alarm's going to go off. It goes off immediately to sheriff's office, they come running over here. But you can't get through that door without a keypad. Every employee in this building that, that's, we're on these floors now, has that keypad. That's, that's a good enough security, I feel, for what our, our concerns are. It's the most cost effective to the taxpayer than to hire more deputy sheriffs. And we had to hire some magistrate's offices because they were there by themselves. We can't keep adding to the, to the county payroll, we just can't keep, can't afford it. So we have to think, what's the most cost effective way to move forward with the least amount of security? You know, and a build out and a space that's wide open downstairs is much more effective than putting new construction anywhere.
Just, just for the public's information, I think the development department has all the mapping, parcel data and G I S information for not all of the county, but for anything related to things that have to get reported. So when somebody has to report an item, it could be just about anything. It's required to have a uniform, a U P L. And so if it's not related to like a court situation, yeah, that person will definitely have to go back and forth. But a lot of people are reporting a subdivision, reporting a mortgage assessment, reporting some simple items, oil and gas stuff. um, assessment, reporting some simple items, oil and gas stuff. So we get thou, we do thousands of those a year. So the person is coming in here to get that, because then they have to go to a court or B's office to get reported. So that will alleviate quite a few people of actually going into the courthouse and maybe help us with the backup. I mean, I'm not.
So they'd be going on, on the third floor down in the first floor in the same building now. So that even alleviates that.
Yeah. So I mean, I just wanted to point that out. I mean, whatever pressure it's size is, is best for the county.
I wasn't even aware of that.
But I, I wanted, that's why I wanted to make sure you were, because anything that has to get, almost anything that has to get reported has to have a UPI.
Yeah.
So.
It's attached to real estate.
Right.
In fact, real estate, there are even some, like the gentleman was talking about the, um, the lien or whatever that was on the, that all has to come through our office.
So previously, they would go from the Third Street Plaza
Yeah.
to the courthouse.
Right.
This way, if the registering course here in the first floor, they would go for this one stop shop.
For some people.
Yeah, for some of those situations.
Half of the people won't have to go.
That's convenient too.
A large number of district records as well. Oh, yeah, digital street. And we saw with, with our move with GIO. Because GIO was convenient, it was right next door, but we sold the building and GIO had to move. And it was, um, you know, there were people that were like, oh, it's going to be this, it's going to be that, and it's mostly worked out fine. They've adjusted. It's been whatever, six months, how, how long? And if you ask the people down there, it's good. It took a little time, and people had to figure some things out, but the bus goes there, and it's just, so it's not as convenient, because for the people that used to just be able to go from the courthouse and walk twenty steps. But people have adapted, and it was, it was the best situation we could come up with, and it's a situation that works fine. And, um, we just have to adapt.
So in conclusion, I think we just want to work together as a team, everybody, and try to figure out the best possible solution that helps the taxpayer, and it's the least impact on their pocket too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Take care.
Yep, take care.
I don't want to be the dead horse with that, but that's, my comments would be, I mean, cost to add to the courthouse, but an additional floor is prohibited. We have space available here. Our job of the three of us is to control the finances of the county. Spending more, spending more, spending more is never the solution. Uh, so we have the space available. We had to move somebody, as, as Commissioner Metzger said, we did have a conversation with, um, president judge, and one thing that was interesting from a comment, that conversation is the orphan courts have one record. We can utilize a huge safe on the first floor of this building, either fire safe, water safe, locked up. That was, that was a big selling point for me as well, that now we're, we're really securing those records. Uh, but again, the cost to me is, is the biggest thing. So to add security to this building is a huge legacy cost to the taxpayers that will go on forever. Hiring, health care, benefits, payroll. That's a huge expense. Adding one over there, a huge expense. One thing that I don't, I didn't want to get involved with the buildings. Um, that was all done with the previous commissioners. We had a big meeting with staff that said, nope, they don't like the plan. And that's why this got redeveloped into a plan of getting people out of the basement, and I agree with that a hundred percent. I would not want my office be at the basement of that courthouse. And, you know, the pro bono Terry asked for more storage space.
Well, he, he.
Demestics needs more storage space, and we're giving them twenty years. So it's a twenty-year advantage we're putting in that building with the plan. I don't know that anybody's done it in the past. It's always been, well, for the next two years, you got this extra space. In the next two years, you, we're making a plan for twenty years that satisfies the needs of the county and reduces our expenditures at buildings. Because keep in mind, they also get rid of get rid of a building, we get rid of a thirty thousand dollar a month lease. That's all coming back.
Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand. So all that's coming back, you know, that, that's my, that's our main agenda. It's, it's taxpayers' money.
The safes.
Yeah.
It's all an article. Talking about taking the safes out of this building.
Yeah, one safe would, it would cost us close to a hundred thousand dollars to remove. Is that going to happen? We don't, we were not going to.
No, that's, that's the perfect. For the orphan records.
Yeah, we want, we would, we would hope that that would be utilized. Uh, the request was they wanted the safe removed. Said, no, we're not removing the safe because of the cost. And what, and, and why, why move something that can be utilized by county resources?
I think the last thing I'd say, and it's this entire building, we, they've done, the previous commissioners have done an excellent job with the decisions they made to sell executive plaza. Get out of that lease, renovate this building that sat empty. We bought this building fifteen years ago, longer than that. Twenty years ago, and it's been empty. Um, they, they were smart enough to say, listen, let's get that top floor where we can rent it. Our goal is to rent it to other, elective offices, whether it's senators or congressmen or whatever, so that that helps the, the public. Probably will have two buildings. Across street from another, I understand that, but two buildings, make it more efficient for everybody. We'll get rent money out of the top floor. We'll fill this building up and make it efficient, so we don't have empty space. And we'll give the people that are in the courthouse the storage space they need for twenty years. It's a win-win, and it brings everybody up to today's codes and today's, I mean, as Commissioner Metzger said, that bill, that office for, for, for register for nineteen seventy-two, no upgrades, so. Nineteen seventy, no upgrades. We're, we're going to upgrade that to be in the twentieth century, so that it's, it's a lot easier for people to utilize that, that office once it moves.
And by having Sherwell now on the fourth floor, instead of paying a rent down on Basis Street, that rent gets paid on this building, which helps pay the bond down.
And when we have an incident here, I can tell you for a fact, the sheriff's deputies are here very quickly. Even if you mistakenly hit the button.
As she smiles in the back of the.
She runs very fast.
So thank you, Roger.
But thank you for your comments, sir.
Any other public comment at this time? Any online?
Nothing online.
Okay, well, we've completed our agenda. We'll meet back here on September twelfth. Thank you, everyone. Have a good weekend.
When, when the sheriffs are running across the street, are you thinking what moron accidentally hit the button?